1:00 if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Johnson.
Here.
Kelly. McColsky.
Here.
Pollocka.
Here.
Leaks May.
Here.
Do we need to approve for the absence for this council meeting as well?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I move that we excuse Councilmember Kelly from this meeting.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, we're going on to it looks like we have presentations tonight, a couple of them. Approval of the agenda, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the agenda with one edit. I move that item 7G be taken from the consent agenda and moved to become item eight. Let's make that 8A on the regular agenda, which will make the current item 8A, item 8B.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Make that note. Now, presentations. First up is presentation 4A, Ferndale Arts and Beautification for their October 25, 2025 Bootification Awards.
Hello, Mayor, Council, and Ferndaleans. I am pleased to present the 2025 Bootification Award winners. We had 59 nominated houses this year, seven in the Northeast, 11 in the Northwest, 13 in the Southeast, and the Southwest is always our big pull of 28 different houses. We do, we did have some repeat customers, houses that have won or not eligible to win again for five years, just to make it fair for everybody, because that's the way we like to keep it here. Our first winner in the Northeast is 3103 Inman. They have a party going on in the front yard. Once you get past the security guard, you can hang out with the witches, or the pumpkin guitarist, or boogie down with Oogie Boogie. The skeletons have their own section ornate with spider webs and gigantic spiders. Congratulations to 3103. I think they were going to attend tonight? No, okay. This is it during the day. We've chosen to do day and night photos, so you can see some a little better than others. Our Northwest winner is 2045 Highland. This hand-built spider web covers most of the front yard and pulses with light at night to attract its victims. Hiding atop the porch, the cats are prepared to pounce on anything that escapes the web. Congratulations to 2045, and I know they're here tonight. Would you like to come up and say a little something?
Go ahead.
Oops. Go ahead.
My son put it all together. He had to keep doing it.
He wanted to come to the microphone?
We won't forget that.
My, my son had a lot to do with putting it together. My husband was in the hospital for two weeks, and he thought this would be a nice way to surprise him, so. That surprised him, so.
You can take your, you want to get your award?
Thank you so much.
And we'll bring your signs to you in a minute.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. This is cool.
And we're going to back up a little bit because Inman just walked in. We'll show their photos, and if you'd like to come up and get your award as well, and say a little bit about your, your presentation out there?
Hello, everyone. I'm Gerald Slaughter. So, ever since I was a little guy, Halloween's been my favorite. Now, I got two little ones of my own, so I try to go all out, collect a little bit more every year. This year, we got the Rock and Roll Pumpkin and the Rapping Grim Reaper. Got the skeletons around them watching, and just some things thrown in, just whatever we can do to keep the kids happy, stuff like that. I appreciate you all.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Our Southeast winner is 821 Spencer. She sent us a little write-up. She said, "Step right up to the Ferndale Haunted Circus. Neon webs stretch across the yard, and eerie clowns grin from the shadows. The faint scent of mischief fills the air of Spencer Street. Legend has it the ringmaster herself grew up surrounded by clowns, and she has carried that love of laughter, creativity, and a little good-natured chaos into her Halloween masterpiece. Each trick-or-treater leaves with a themed toy a laugh, and maybe even a little tiny trick of their own." Caitlin? Would you like to say something?
Thank you so much. It's such an honor. I've been living in Ferndale for over 10 years, and Halloween is the Christmas for me. So, it's been a pleasure. Every year, I try to do a different theme, and this is the first year I decided to go forward with just one theme. So, to, to win is, is, it's just, I have no words. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
You'll see the haunted clown bus and the skull toss. There's a little bit for everybody. So, our Southwest winner is also part of the haunted circus. Hold on one second, sorry. "These circus tests popped up overnight on the West Side. They seem to be inhabited by haunted creatures who are forced to perform when you appear for them. Ghost clowns play Ring Around the Rosie outside, and the rainbow-haired skeleton stands guard outside." I believe this is our youngest winner ever. Come on up. Am I standing there so you can reach the mic?
Uh, this is actually my animatronic collection, if you. Um, and also, I think, I probably got the idea for this. We only had the tent on this side last year. I, I forgot my left and my right.
That's okay.
And then we added this one, uh, this year.
Well, you can take your certificate.
Thank you.
And we'll take a photo, please, at the end of the presentation. So, you can see here is Skeleton Dog, and the haunted goats, the haunted ghosts, and everything like that. Our business winner this year was Western Market. Festooned by pumpkins and mums along with a few haunted characters, Western Market embraces the bootification spirit. They are our 2025 winner. All bootification nominated houses are on our map, which the link is available on our social media channels of Facebook and Instagram. You can submit your houses to be included in the map, or also to be a treat station on our 2025 map, so check us out there. And this past Saturday, we were very happy to take part in the downtown Ferndale Trick or Treat. We hosted a Fab Temporary Tattoo Parlor. We had a pet treat station, a creative station, and we also had a station where people could decorate the dot. We were very happy to see so many neighbors and so many great costumes. Last but not least, coming soon is the Holiday Lights nominations. It'll be available in late November, so you can submit your favorite lights all around the city. And thank you very much, and we can take a photo if everyone would like to come up for a photo. Does she want us to come up?
We don't have to.
Just because you said that I'm going to ask, did you want us to come? Okay, that's what I thought. I thought. A little bit. Bye-bye, thank you. Okay. Item 4B, vacant structure ordinance update, and I'm presuming that's why you're standing right there?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Just a brief update on the implementation of Ferndale's vacant property ordinance, which was adopted in April of this year. The ordinance required, for a little refresher here, that vacant and abandoned properties register with the city. They do a six-month registration. The CED and fire departments were going to inspect the properties during the initial registration period, as well as CED was going to do a once monthly exterior inspection. So, as we were getting ready to get the ordinance adopted, staff compiled a list of suspected vacant property by looking at residential properties and their principal resident exemption status. So, those who had a 0% PRE went on, you know, the initial list, and then we reviewed whether those properties had rental certificates. We went in and looked at their water usage to see if, if there was evidence that people were living there or not. And then, fire department was also reviewing commercial and industrial certificates of occupancy, as well as their fire inspection records. The initial list resulted in about 60 properties, most of which were residential. So, through June and July, because of course, right, we had to publish that the ordinance was adopted, wait for it to take effect, CED staff began sending letters to the owners of these properties, informing them that they needed to register. Again, as I said, the list contained about 60 properties, mostly residential. Here's an issue. To date, only about six properties have registered, paid, and been inspected, though we have issued approximately 60 tickets for violations of the ordinance. Some of the issues we've been facing, resistance from property owners, some of this is due to cost. I've also heard potential stigma of being placed on this vacant or abandoned property list. We've had difficulty, and this has been a significant one, difficulty dealing with properties that are owned still by deceased individuals, but have yet to have their estates taken care of. We did recently have some success trying to push the issue through probate. Don't really recommend this, this action, because it took eight months for this single property to finally get the estate settled where we have a registered person responsible for it. We also have a vague enough definition of the vacancy, so there have been efforts to try and find ways around it. Commercial buildings that say, "It's not vacant, we're using it for storage," or, "It's not vacant, I'm living there half the time," right? So, we definitely have ran into issues with that. And the implementation of this ordinance has been really time-consuming for the inspectors, prior to CED director, as well as now myself over the last few months, trying to, to work through and deal with, with these issues. So, the team has kind of put together some thoughts that the ordinance committee might want to take a look at over the next little bit. It's still pretty early, right? We're, we're only six months into the first, first bit of this ordinance, so it might be premature. We're hopeful that, that we can really keep going and keep pushing this to get better compliance. But some things for the ordinance committee to consider, some better definitions around what constitutes a vacant structure, which will make it easier to enforce, easier for the courts and for prosecution to, to really push the issue, potentially lowering the fee for registration. Maybe this will incentivize people to really get into, into the registration, and we can increase our numbers of, of registered vacant structures. And then potentially looking at a less intrusive inspection schedule to lessen some of the burden on the staff. Perhaps something we were kicking around earlier today was the initial registration would be full-on exterior, interior, and then for each renewal, it would just take place with an exterior inspection. That way, we can, we can still get, get eyes on the property, we can see if major changes are taking place. Code inspectors are pretty, pretty professional, pretty good. They can recognize when construction's taking place, when things are happening, there's a change, whether it's been sold strictly through that exterior. And then also, we're hopeful that it'll, it'll make the process easier to go through. So, that's kind of a, a brief summary of where we're at. We are still pushing forward and running into, running into issues, but we're, we're running through them as we can. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that I might be able to.
I was just going to ask, I noticed you said that it was mostly residential. What's the breakdown between residential and industry, or business?
I think we're at about a five to one on that, so 50 of those 60, I think, initial list were residential. I do know we, we, in that initial list, we missed some of the, the commercial and industrial. So, that's kind of another bit of, of trying to implement this. But again, I recall during the conversation when the ordinance was passed, a lot of the focus was residential, which is probably why CED at the time started, started there.
Could you go back two slides? So, those 60 tickets that were issued, are we seeing, are we seeing people just pay those and not move forward with the process of registering their vacant property, just kind of cost of doing business?
We're seeing a little bit of both, and I would look at our city attorney, who deals with most of them. We're seeing both people paying them, but we're also seeing a lot of disputes, where it's going to court and kind of being, becoming a little bit of a backlog on the system.
Do we have a full list of the disputes within the court that you could share with the ordinance committee?
We can try and at least put one together. Yeah, we could get a look at what the docket looks like.
Has anyone indicated that the, can you, can you go back to the list of sort of some of the reasons that people gave? Okay, yeah. How many people have indicated that there's, when you say due to cost, I assume you don't mean the cost of registration. You mean the cost to, like, secure it, clean it up, et cetera? Or do you mean the registration cost?
The registration cost seems to be a bit of the, the issue. We've had some success. Some of the properties have actually gone through and decided instead of, instead of trying to go through this process, they'll go through the rental, become certified, and just never rent it, because they, that, that registration's a little less expensive, though we look at a lot more. It's a little bit better for the property, because then we're looking at more, more code, more issues, and we make them bring things up. Whereas this, we say, "Hey, these are the issues you have to deal with."
The ordinance committee can, will work on this.
We'll be putting, putting together something for you. All right.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you much.
All right. So, we're coming to, we're at the, we're at call to audience, so anyone can come up to the podium to speak on anything on or off the agenda. Just, if you'd like, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak about anything at all.
Dominic Scapatici, 840 La Prairie. I'm here as part of Ferndale Garden Club, and I just wanted to take this moment, introduce the new president of Ferndale Garden Club. For those, I'm sure most people are familiar, but the garden club has been part of Ferndale since 1931, and we do lots of, we have a community garden, we do a community seed share, we do a scholarship, but I'm going to turn it over, because I always talk a lot.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Ranger. I'm at 809 West Maplehurst. We are actually new to Ferndale this year, and really excited to take, not take over, become the new president for the garden club as well. I don't know what else to say.
Next, next meeting.
Oh, um, yes, we have our next meeting coming up at the library on November, what are we, the 13th? Thank you, Dominic. My brain, I just started a new job, so. November 13th at the library, 6:30. We are doing a presentation party, so there will be a lot of PowerPoint presentations happening on very tiny topics, all put together.
I have to say that I love that you, you said you've been here how long in Ferndale?
You moved here in June.
Okay, not even a year. Not even a year?
No.
Six months.
And you're already the president of the garden club? I think that's pretty great.
Oh, thank you.
Welcome to Ferndale, and thank you for your volunteerism.
Yeah, absolutely. My pleasure.
If I'm allowed to speak more time. I was going to mention, as part of the Ferndale Memorial Association, upcoming November 11th is Veterans Day, so I just want to invite the community to the Veterans Day ceremony that takes place 11:00 a.m. at Ferndale's Memorial Mall, which is located on Livernoy, across from the firehouse, Cross Street, Saratoga. It's a, it's a wonderful heartfelt community ceremony to honor all the folks that have served in our community over the years and are serving now. And after the ceremony, which will include some remarks by the mayor, remarks by a veteran that lives in Ferndale, there'll be coffee and donuts provided by the fire department at the firehouse across the street. So, we encourage everyone, if you're free on that day, stop by, and we'll see you there. Thank you.
Still open for call to audience for anyone who? All right. Okay, we are moving on then to, I'm closing call to audience at 7:22, and we're going on to the consent agenda. Item 7A, approval of the October 13th, 2025 meeting minutes. 7B, approval of the resolution recognizing November as Family Court Awareness Month. 7C, consideration of support for the Transportation Alternative Program grant applications for the Woodward Sidewalk Improvement Program. 7D, approval of resolution thanking U.S. EPA for selecting Ferndale to participate in the Get the Lead Out Initiative. 7E, approval of the resolution to authorize D-Town Spirits Company LLC as a qualified licensee for the Ferndale Social District. 7F, approval of the municipal credit and community credit contract for the fiscal year 2026 with SMART. 7G, approval to purchase, approval to issue a purchase order to East Jordan Iron Works for water infrastructure repair parts in the amount of $45,000. 7H, approval of Cedom Host Partner fee for My Healthy Climate Fellow Placement and Budget Amendment in the amount of $14,175. 7I, approval of the replacement and repairs of the Albany Water Booster Station by Professional Pump, Inc., and UIS SCADA in the amount not to exceed $30,179.56. 7J, approval to replace an exhaust fan at the DOT from Rolls Mechanical in the amount of $9,396.25. 7K, approval of bills and payrolls as submitted by the finance director and subject to review by the, by the council finance committee.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. What just happened in here? Okay. We are moving on to our regular agenda. Item 8A, which was removed from the consent agenda, is the approval of the purchase of Bulk Road Salt from Detroit Salt Company for 2025-26 in an amount not to exceed $93,892.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I did not have anything prepared, but I did have something last year that kind of goes over salt totals, so we'll just pull that up so we can all see it. So, these are the total amounts of snowfall. Salt ordered, 80% of the orders, what we need to take. We order salt typically through, well, always through my deal. We order salt in spring of every year, based on the expected amount that we need. We look at what's in the salt barn. So, we pay as that salt's delivered. We request an amount. This year, 1250 tons. We have to take 80% of that. We pay a cost for anything that we don't take. We can take 30% over that in case, in case there is a heavy snowfall. About 50% of what we do pay for is reimbursed by MDOT, because it's used on Eight Mile and Woodward. We can store 2,400 tons total. Again, we ordered in the spring, and I will say, I ordered it in the spring of 2024. Last year, it did not go to council. That was an oversight, and I'll take responsibility for that. Traditionally, it is not something that DPW took to council, and I can't really speak to that, but that is what I saw, and I assure you that it will go to council every year going forward, which is why it's here now.
So, initially, just, it was just pulled because of such the high dollar amount. We wanted it to be on the regular agenda instead of on the consent. I don't have any issues with the purchase, but if anyone else has any questions or concerns, I open it up.
Through the chair. So, one thing that I did notice, because I was looking for the, the order from last year, so naturally, I was looking at October, November, December, couldn't find anything. And so, I did a search, and I found, now, I know you can't always trust the internet, but I did find an order that Detroit Salt Company says that we made in June, but when I look at our agenda, I don't see anything in June that we approved of an order for salt.
So, so last year, we did pay some storage fees that had been from, I believe, '21, ' '22, and '23 last year. We had, it was on the consent agenda. I can't remember. I can look that up, but we paid storage fees. The state had an issue where they took to a larger portion of the contract, to my understanding, not totally understanding of state politics. They spent less with Detroit Salt. Detroit Salt did invoice any customers based on the agreement, that they weren't traditionally actually charging. So, we did have a catch-up bill on what they call salt storage fees that are kind of delineated through the contract with my deal, and we did pay those. And I can't remember the name of the vendor that we got through my deal, but we used their alternative vendor out of Kansas, and I want to say they're like Mission Minerals. So, we did order salt, but not from Detroit Salt Company last season. Compass Minerals.
This year, we're ordering it through Detroit Salt.
Correct.
Okay.
But we have no control over which vendor we select. We tell my deal how much we want, and then they run everything. They connect us with a price, and then we need to take that amount of salt, the minimum that we ordered.
Okay, I don't have any questions.
Through the chair. I, it's less question, more comment. When this comes back to the agenda item, you mentioned something about 50% of what we use is reimbursed by MDOT along Eight Mile. I think it would be helpful just for a point of illustration to the public if we have that in the agenda item in the future.
It should be a revenue offset item, if we're getting a reimbursement.
Yeah, ideally, the budget impact should talk about that.
The net tax cost is lower than.
Yeah, I think the budget. Fair point. Going forward, that is something I'll include.
Thank you. Okay. I move we approve the purchase of Bulk Road Salt from Detroit Salt Company for 2025-26 in an amount not to exceed $93,892.
Support. If we have a roll call, please?
Johnson.
Yes.
McColsky.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes. So, it is approved to approve the purchase of the Bulk Road So it is approved to approve the purchase of the Bulk Road Salt from Detroit Salt Company for 2025 through 26 for up to $93,892 under the my deal contract from the account listed and as submitted by the DPW Director as passed. All right. Item 8B, LSLR update and consideration of staffing increase.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we're here, as we are every year, to talk about the lead service line program updates in a year. I invite Jeff up to the podium with me, if not to just sit behind me and pat me on the back as needed. Normally, I would kind of hand over the floor to him. He would do some show and tell. We didn't do as much this year and in the interest of keeping this brief, having more time for question and answers, I'm going to roll through the slides that Jeff normally would roll through. So again, this time, we're going to go over updates and then we will roll into a staffing recommendation about halfway through. So always, first thing we talk about why this matters, there is no safe level of lead in drinking water. The highest risk is still for pregnant people and children. The source water that we get water from at Gleewa through the Detroit River is lead-free. We get lead from service lines, home plumbing, older fixtures, including faucets. So aging service lines, interior pipes, those are the greatest risk. The shared goal, I put that in here because while we do get upset sometimes about an unfunded mandate, there are questions, concerns that we have with state and Fed. We all do have a shared goal and that goal is safe drinking water for all of our residents. So the regulatory landscape, I put the timeline up there. I'm not going to go over everything, but just know that the Michigan Lead and Copper Rule, actually, is that the revision? Regardless, don't hold me on the acronyms. EPA is the Lead and Copper Rule improvements of 2024. What's important to know is that we need to verify all public and private service lines by 2037, December 31st, 2037. We need to replace all lead and galvanized lines as well. This also establishes a new action level. We'll talk about that a little bit with our Lead and Copper Sampling Slide. That is 12 points, parts per billion, as opposed to 15, what it was before this year. So this year, we finished our participation Get the Lead Out program. So I just want to wrap that up real quick. From 2024 to 2025, we were one of five communities in Michigan. As a result of our partnership, we gained knowledge on 800, yep, 870 verifications through door knocking. We got 140 hydrovac excavations that were paid for by the EPA. This program refined Ferndale's existing efforts. We made some really good partnerships with neighboring communities, learned best practices, gave us an opportunity to do a really hard look on what we're doing. And I will say that we were doing what we're doing pretty well, but this kind of allowed us to fine tune it, do a few things better than we were doing before. So just to note, we did have 2,000 replacements pre Get the Lead Out Initiative, but we have gotten better. And I'll just say that importantly, it was a partnership and I think part of that is that the federal team gained on-the-ground insight that they maybe didn't have from Washington. So we always talk about this too, and in this presentation, it's important to note the public and the private side. So you start at the Water Main, you get to the curb stop, that is the public side. From the curb stop where we shut off water to the house is the private side. So the city is mandated by Michigan State to replace both sides if lead is found on either. And I just would like everyone to remember public and private because we'll make a distinction later on when we talk about program cost over time. So the 2025 work plan and results, normally given to Jeff. We did 10 verifications this year. That is not a lot, but it's because we spent a lot of time doing verifications with some ARPA funding that we had in 2024. So this year, we spent everything that we did have on replacements, of which we got about 141, actually exactly 141 to this day done. Our focus this year and last year is on high lead percentage areas. These are areas where we can work on a block, 90% lead, get out as much as we can as efficiently as possible, have the highest impact on a neighborhood. We took the approach to do one neighborhood per quadrant, so if we were doing 12, we would go around the quadrants three times using Nine Mile and Woodward as our barometer. 10-year paving program ends this year. That means the next repaving cycle starts 2032-2035. What does that mean to lead service? It means that we have the ability to focus on high lead areas. Whereas before, we kind of had to phase and schedule a little bit with the infrastructure work more because we didn't want to spend more money overall by repaving roads that had just been paved. So coordination with city infrastructure, mostly Water Main and utilities, DT and consumers is still a thing. But less work being planned means less to coordinate with and more efficient, just getting lead out of the ground like we want to do. Cumulative, cumulative progress. So 2021, we did 479 replacements. That was the first year of the program. 2022, 607, 502, 516, 141. You'll note the difference is that we did 141 this year. Look at the bar chart. You see, we had high numbers. The only reason it dipped from 600 to 500 is not because we were 1.6% worse. I'm bad at those ratios. It's just a matter of what was in the ground. So we didn't understand what we had underneath. We were doing a lot of paving projects at the same time, so we just got 100 less that year because the blocks we were working in didn't have as many as we thought they'd have roughly. So what does that mean? Steady growth through 2024. We had a 2025 dip. That's tied to reduced funding again. I do want to mention, the longer the dip equals the steeper the climb later. This is just like deferred maintenance. Cost savings now just mean more costs later on. And we'll talk about why delays are costly as we get into the projections. So just to talk about lead and copper sampling for a second. Ferndale was under the, the 90th percentile was under 12 parts per billion, so we were under the action level this year. Again, we were at our worst in 2020 when we went above at 15 parts per billion. Since then, this isn't our trend, but this is a state trend and we have kind of trended in the same direction. You can kind of see everyone's going down. The problem is there is a dashed line about the middle of that graph that says 12, which means everyone needs to continue to go down at a faster rate or else there's going to be more and more cities, including potentially us at some point going forward, that are above the action level and will just have more administrative costs, more inspections, reporting, communications, additional verification work. So that is all possible. And then there is a white paper that's currently out from the EPA proposing to move the action level to 10, so it's only going to get tighter in the future. So next steps for residents. One of the biggest frustrations, and I understand that when we get calls, is when are you going to get to me? Unfortunately, it is a long-term program. The scope and the scale dictates that, so some people are just going to have to wait until the program gets to them and that's not an easy message. But there are a few things that residents can do to lower exposure to lead in their water. Number one, you can self-report your service line material if you haven't already done so. That is on our website. That helps us prioritize the program and get more lead out of the ground efficiently. You can also replace lead plumbing fixtures in your own home. You can flush your pipes in the morning, including narrators. Cold water for drinking and cooking and use lead-reducing filters. This graphic is pretty helpful and Eagle, the county, and EPA all have information on how to reduce lead in drinking water. And I'll just say that filters, you don't need a very expensive filter to separate lead from your drinking water. National perspective. Just so you see, it's not just a Ferndale problem, right? There are 9 million lead services estimated nationwide, over nine, the total cost of which is 72 to $90 billion. This will come up in a few slides, but the EPA is using 10,000 per service line as their estimate for construction. We'll talk about ours a little bit later on, but just to know that it is price tracked against that. Federal funding from the bipartisan infrastructure law, because I always forget what bill means, is 15 billion for five years. That's roughly 17% of the total need. And I'll say that that's not just a giveaway. There it's 50% loan, 50% grant. So there's a funding gap for the nation of 60 to $75 billion. And that means that state and local funding will be required. So state and local cost context, what does that mean? Michigan fiscal year 2025, 1.2 billion was requested from Michigan communities, about $61.9 million in funds were given out, again, roughly 50 to 50% loan versus grant. And some of the loans were potentially forgiven, but I think that goes into the 50 side. So communities did request 1.2 billion, so less than 6% was funded. Ferndale ranks, we apply for these SRFs every year. We are not a disadvantaged community. I don't see us improving our score very much. We consistently rank in the middle and this year we're 31 out of 50. And I believe funding stopped at the 12th spot on the list. Full replacements that we see, so I mentioned 10,000 for EPA estimates. We look at about 87.50. That is our projected cost for a full replacement, start to finish, including restoration. Partial replacements is something that we're starting to look at. We've really been able to take our GIS data, refine some of these numbers, predict what we have in the ground a lot better than we used to in the past. So we think that, well, based on that, so private only at a cost of three to four ratio, private only, out of that 87.50, we expect to be about 37.50. Public only, we expect to be about 5,000 because public requires pavement restoration. Private only requires grass restoration, so that's where the cost disparity comes from. And of what we have left, I wish I would have done this, but I think it's 30, roughly 37.50. We have about 2,500 fulls, because most of what we find is a full replacement, 527 privates and 734 public side-only replacements. So total program cost, using that 87.50 figure, which represents today's dollars, is $28 million. And then I will put a caveat there that the year is over, so that price is going to get worse. Cost escalation scenarios. I chose 4.5%, 6%, 7.5% because that's what most people look at. I do want to mention, because you might say to yourself, well, inflation was locked in at 4.4 from 2020 to 2025, and that is true. But this isn't just inflation. This is also cost of construction for that same term. Cost of replacements went up roughly 12% on average per year. So really, if anything, this is the bare minimum of what we expect this project to cost. So low, moderate, high at 4.5%, 6%, 7.5%. We have $34.5 million over 12 years, $37 million at 6, and roughly 40 at 7.5. So as you can see, inflation, cost escalation adds millions per year. And I didn't want to scare anyone and put this in writing, but if it did go at 12% as it has for the last year, I don't expect that because of COVID, we'd be looking at $50 million total project. Five-year delay. Well, actually, before I get into that, I'll just say that these numbers assume that we do 450 the next four years from '26 to '29. And if we don't, these numbers get worse. Five-year delay where we do 150 a year. We do that pace for five more years. That adds at the 4.5 and 7.5, 2 to 5 million dollars per year, just because we're doing less at the front, more at the back. So the earlier we act, the less we pay. Okay, so what can we do? It's a very expensive, it is a very costly project. Not a lot of positives there, but the one positive is that GIS data identifies areas of lead and copper. Smaller incremental gains over 12 years do end up being decent savings and there are savings that we can put straight at replacement cost. So again, we're focusing work on blocks with higher percentage lead because of this GIS data. I added this image just because it's one of the ways that we kind of looked at, we started finding some patterns. We realized that 93 Water Main replacements mostly almost every time meant that the public side was replaced. So we know that on all of these blocks, what we will find if they're built under, when lead was in the ground, it's going to be private side only because at that point, we know that public side was built copper along with Water Main. So we have just been looking at data. We're getting more in-house work, potentially could get even more efficiency. So we looked at process staffing, reporting improvements, one of which is looking at in-house verifications. And part of the reason that we looked at that is because we're locked in at a really good rate with our former contractor, Gustafson, at 338. We bargained for that rate, I believe, in 2020. Most of the work was included under an SRF, so it was a little bit more costly for them to do the work just because of the SRF requirements. As our SRF ended, they extended that price because it was it was cheaper for them to do the work because there was less requirements for reporting, as it were, with the state revolving fund. So we looked at that. We came up with a scenario in which in-house verifications could be performed in-house using two additional staff and our equipment. It had a potential cost savings of 1 to 1.5 million dollars. So why do we think we should add staff? Because we have 6,000 service lines of unknown material left in the city. We have less than 10%. Assuming that less than 10% of those are self-reported, which I think right now we're a little under 5%. Let's assume that number goes up. That number needs to go up more than 10% because 57% of lead is kind of our ratio. So even if 20% report it, we still have 5,500 or so service lines that will need to be verified. So all of those need to be verified pre-replacement. We're looking at adding two full-time laborers. That's what this looks at. Again, estimated savings of 1.5, 1.05 to 1.75 million. And I'll go over those numbers in a cost escalation slide similar to what we looked at for the total of the program. But I'll just go over a few stats. So contractors, right now, we price check this with Oakland County. They're paying about $610 per verification. Again, we were locked in at 338. We're not going to get that price again. We're probably going to be more in the realm of 610. 210,000 per year is what it would cost to hire two step-one laborers, grade-one, step-one laborers. So two staff plus materials ends up being 2,000, 210,000 per year. And I'll compare the two directly in the next slide. So we also have direct control over scheduling when it's in-house. We also are in the middle of collecting our water and sewer assets, so we will do full GIS and reporting integration at the same time. Our staff will go out, they'll do the work, they'll GPS every asset in the field, which is an expensive process and would either cost more if we use the contractor to do it at the same time or we just wouldn't be able to do it. So in the contractor scenario, there are no long-term savings. And I'll say that that just means less money for replacement. And if we did it in-house, it means internal savings and potentially more for replacements. And then in order to make sure that we're honest and accurate in representing the the low bar for what we would save, we calculated in-house work against contractor work at a two-to-one efficiency ratio. And that means that contractors can perform 16 verifications in one day. What we looked at is us performing eight in one day. And you may say like, well, why aren't you guys as good contractors? Well, it's just because they haven't been doing the job. I think eventually we will get closer to that 16, but it's important to to put an honest understanding out here. It is going to take us a couple of years to scale up to their level. So it's not fair to compare us to what they were doing after having done it for five or six years. So the 12-year cost scenario, again, I used 4.5%, 6%, 7.5%. And I will also mention that the cost from 2020 to 2025 of construction and inflation for verification specifically did go up 12.5% on average. So while 7.5% represents 4.91 million from contractor in total, 12.5, the average over the same five years, is 7.2 million. So either way, I've included, you'll see the orange is the city cost. That doesn't, that is going up. It's going up at 4.5%. And that's because our labor contracts are locked in at 4.5%. We use Schedule C rates for our equipment and we get that from the state and those on average go up 4 to 4.5%. So we really have much more control and predictability in using internally staff, internal staff equipment to perform this work. We have a vector now. We have capital in the budget to purchase a new vector, which means we're going to use this factor as the backup primarily for these purposes. So we're not buying new equipment to do this work. And the internal savings really are consistent across scenarios. We save money using internal staff and equipment. And it looks like 1 to 1.75 million. Additionally, so that's all great. We can also do that work in about three and a half months every year. So we hired two staff and we really have a lot more that we can get out of that staff. So each labor equals 1750 productive hours a year. You might say, well, what are they doing? Playing cards? They're not. It's normally 20, 80, but we have sick time, personal time, vacation time. There's like, there's testing, training, things that they have to do where they can't be in the field doing service work. So what that does leave us with, 1,954 hours with which we can do other DPW work. And that's 1.4 FTE for core services. Many of the core services additionally, we perform at cheaper in-house rates, for example, tree removals. We can go out and get a dangerous We can go out and get a dangerous tree down, usually beat the price of contractor, because we are not building in profit to our costs. So all of that work, most of that work is going to be something that we can do internally at a cheaper rate than where we'd use an outside contractor. And a lot of those things are important. We do have deferred maintenance. I mentioned tree removals because we do have a significant amount of deferred tree maintenance. So verification recommendation summary, usually I have one summary at the end, today I have two. This is for the action item. We're recommending two full-time staff laborers starting January twenty twenty-six, going through to December thirtieth, twenty thirty-seven. Twelve years from now, savings includes one to one point seven five million over twelve years. This will ensure that we have compliance through twenty thirty-seven on verifications. This will also add staff that can tackle deferred maintenance throughout the year when they're not doing verifications. It strengthens our capacity for core DPW services over the same timeline. And importantly, if the city chooses to downsize by two staff in twenty thirty-seven, that's so long from now that we do have an older staff that I expect will have resignations and retirements just through natural attrition. So second summary for the lead service line program itself. Total cost, we're looking at thirty-four to forty million dollars. Again, that's probably low. That's a conservative estimate compared with what we've seen over the last five years. Internal verifications could save one to one point seven five. I just mention that again because it is an incremental change that can kind of put more money into the replacement pool. The longer we delay, the more the total cost of the program. If we act now, it'll lower the cost, it'll smother our compliance going into twenty thirty-seven. So next steps for council and city management is to identify, and this is a big one, to identify log-term funding strategy. And I thank you for listening and I'm happy to answer questions.
First, we need to have a motion prior to discussion.
I move we approve the request to hire two DPW laborers to support the lead service line replacement program and to authorize the city manager to make necessary amendments.
Support.
Open for discussion among council.
Um, Madam Mayor, I'll go first. So this question is probably more for Colleen than Jim, but I, so we noted that this would be funded by the Water Fund. The problem is, the staff are going to be doing DPW functions outside of that in the rest of the year. I don't know that that would be allowable under the, are those, I don't think those functions would be. Are we talking about an inter-fund reimbursement situation where one fund would?
We would, we would continue to have to treat it the same way we do existing DPW staff, which is an appropriate allocation for the individual staff based on the work that they do do.
Great. So we'd be allocating like inter-fund.
Yeah, we have for every, nearly every DPW staff position, we have a split.
Got it. Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was, you know, understood. And we think that we can fit this in, this would not involve raising water rates, this wouldn't require us to make those sorts of changes.
So long-term, we did find cost savings to get us into July one, twenty twenty-six. We would have to talk about that. But that is a cost that eventually we're going to have to either pay to a contractor or do this to potentially pay less over the same amount of time. But either way, the verification work is going to require more funding in the water budget.
Yeah, there, there's really no way around lead service line verification and replacement not ultimately impacting our rate structure over the next ten to twelve years.
Sure, but I'll make my question more pointed. These two staff members, if added, would not require us to raise the water rates in the current fiscal year. And we think that we could probably, if we look over the budget for all of the water-related functions, find a way to accommodate this at least for the twenty-seven budget. I'm not looking to raise water rates, revise the water rates again. I mean, that's.
I mean, we will have to get into a regular schedule of increasing the water rates to keep up with inflationary patterns.
We already are on a schedule. We adopted a schedule to increase the water rates. We're on like a five-year increase plan, so.
Yes, I, I, I think for the, for the current plan, this doesn't go necessarily beyond that. But I believe twenty-seven is the last year of that plan. And the plan did not, well, the plan did not fully account for the costs related to lead service line replacement at the time.
I, I know, I was, I remember. I'm just saying, we already have an adopted published water rate schedule. I would like to do our best to see if we can make this fit without having to deviate from the schedule for at least a little bit. I don't think it's a great time for us to be going out and changing the water rates again.
I, and to that point, you know, that's, that's a determination that council needs to make. Just recognize that the longer we delay or limit ourselves in our ability to go after that verification and replacement, the more costly it gets over time.
Right. Okay. Again, I think I'm not being clear. What I mean is, I'm not saying we don't do this, we should do this, I want to do this. What I'm saying is I want to look over the entire budget for the Water Fund, for water and sewage. And I want to say, can we go through that item by item, which we will as the finance committee, and figure out where are some efficiencies we can make within that budget? Not every dollar is going to a lead line replacement or some, you know, there's, there's stuff in there we can think about. Would we rather have staff or would we rather do something like this? And I would like to try our very best.
Absolutely. We, we are definitely due for an assessment of our capital needs and our operational costs related to the water sewer fund and how that fits into our long-term rate setting strategy.
Sure. Okay. All right.
James, you mentioned that the cost of this, the two, the two staff and the materials would be about two hun, two hundred and ten thousand per year at a step one for the staff members?
Yeah, so that is a grade one, step one, so we will take two positions. If we're given approval, we'll backfill with two new employees. That'll be the cost for those two new employees.
Can you give me the breakdown of that two hundred and ten for the staff per versus?
Yes, I can. In the back of the memo, I put the cost down. So I took grade one laborer, step one, and an hourly rate of twenty-three ninety-two and twenty-four fifty-two. So it's actually a grade one laborer and a grade one laborer that's a step one and a step two. So one is paid a little bit higher than the other. Again, I didn't want to try to tip the scales. I also looked at someone who was a family insurance, so they're a little bit more expensive than someone who was a two-person insurance. So fully burdened cost for those two positions is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, eight hundred and nineteen and seventy-one cents. And then that leaves the cost of the hydro excavator, which was a vector truck, pickup truck, trailer, water, soil, seed, straw. I didn't write this total down, but it is eighteen thousand seven hundred eighty-eight for the vector, eleven thousand nine. I want to say it was sixty-four thousand for the equipment plus materials roughly. And that's today's cost.
Through the chair, is, have we explored potentially working with any other city near us on this issue? Just knowing, everybody in this corridor has to deal with this, right? So we've got, we've got our neighbors in Hazel Park, we've got our neighbors in Oak Park. Is there, is there any way that we can make things a little bit more efficient by cross-using labor or potentially going out to, to bid with those entities? I know you mentioned Oakland County, but I'm assuming that that's probably a no-go. At Oakland County's rate, using a contractor, I'm assuming that even three cities would get a similar rate. But I'm just curious about what we've explored.
So we do, we do opt-in for emergency lead service line replacements. We do opt-in to the contracting with, we have the ability to do so with SACWA and WRC, who's Oakland County. We're seeing that their rates, like, we're basing most of our rates on the rates that they get. They are bundling larger projects. We're not seeing, I would be curious to see what Detroit's number is per lead service. Typically, I would say economies of scale, bundle all of these together. But for this construction project, it just doesn't seem like larger projects are doing that much better. I think it just has to do with supply and demand. Maybe there's not a vendor that can handle much larger projects. So they're all just kind of bidding on these smaller projects at roughly the same rates. It is something that we are continuing to have conversations with. We're a member of GLUW outreach. We do meet with a lot of neighboring communities. We kind of go over best practices, see if there's any ways to gain efficiencies. It is not something that I've heard of yet, but it is something that we'll continue to search for.
I guess as a follow-up to that, part of, part of what I'm struggling with here is we're hiring two laborers for a three point five months out of the year to do verification work. And then we're filling their time with DPW work. And this is the first time that I'm hearing that DPW needs more general laborers. So I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about taking a, a very defined time period need and turning it into a full-time laborer, two full-time laborers for, and correct me if I'm wrong, for just the purposes of verification, this does not include any sort of replacement of the lead service lines.
Correct. This is verification work only.
Is there any way that we can impact the, the number of verifications that are done? You mentioned the self-reporting tool, and I seem to remember back during COVID, we were doing a lot of self-reporting when we were doing the, what was it, the water meter replacement, homes were self-reporting during that time period. Is that a way to abbreviate the timeline for, you know, verifications or drive that number down by having residents do some of that work? Or can it only be done by a DPW laborer or contractor going to the, the curb area for the verification?
No, the self-reporting tool, ideally, a hundred percent of the community would do that, and that would be great. But we're just not seeing that. We do have the self-reporting tool on water bills. We are continuing to put out social media. We're mentioning it, it's all over the website. We hope the self-reporting tool continues to see some participation. But realistically, no community is seeing much higher numbers than we already have. So it is something that we're continuing to try to push, but right now, we've kind of considered if it goes up and if ten percent, twenty percent of the community, which is two thousand residents out of, well, two thousand homes out of ten thousand reports, that's still only going to get us information on two thousand fifty-seven, about a thousand lead service lines. And we've taken that off of the total that we need to verify already. So that is all kind of in, baked into the calculation cost savings. And we're going to continue to try to push that, but realistically, it can only be pushed as high as participation rates allow.
This is going to be a dumb question. Instead of just the three point five months out of the year for the verification work, could they fill the rest of their time going to homes to, to verify just door-knocking campaign so that we can get all these things verified in a shorter timeline?
To add on to my colleague's question, I guess, why only three and a half months for, I mean, we have a lot of good weather months in the year.
Well, so, so we figured that they could do four hundred and sixty-one in a three and a half month period of time. Then they could do other work. Typically, three months buys you four hundred to five hundred replacements based on the verification work. We just looked at the number of replacements we had outstanding, kind of plotted that over a twelve-year period of time. Looked at verifications, plotted that. That's how we came up with three and a half months. And potentially, they could do seven months, cut the program in half. There's different ways that we could do it potentially. If you'd like those as alternatives and options, I can put more together. I just didn't want it to be so unwieldy. I mean, we could, we could give you twenty scenarios and spreadsheets on different ways we could do it, but I just didn't want to confuse the situation.
We all love the twenty scenarios and the spreadsheet.
Well, it's, it's, right now, it's also really a function of how much we anticipate being able to allocate to replacement. So yes, we could verify faster, but we can't really go any faster on the replacement schedule without knowing what our, our financial situation or our funding is going to be like. So I think the strategy that Director Jameson deployed is realistic in terms of our capital expenditure reality for replacement in the subsequent years.
Through the chair, I, I disagree on a very general point. I, I like that you're being agile and using the, the DPW workers for other things, other capacities during time periods where it might make more sense for them to, to focus elsewhere. But this is a public health issue, and if this is a priority and we need to get this done by twenty thirty-seven, the verification portion, if, if we verify everything, now we have a, a real nice timeline and a plotted course of need. And to me, that takes a massive amount of priority.
It helps us, it helps us to, to build off that, it helps us to understand the scale of the problem we actually have to solve. I would rather verify as much upfront as I can to kind of start to better understand how truly big the problem is. Because the reason for the verification is that we don't know. We don't know what we don't know.
If I could speak to that, I apologize if you want to ask that question.
Well, just through the chair. So a lot of people have been saying, well, you know, if I have it, then I, I want to be able to either know when it's getting done or I'll just do it myself. And so I, I think it's important that we do verify as soon as possible, you know. I, I don't want to have to still be verifying ten years from now. It doesn't make sense to me. I was going along the line, going down a little bit different path. So verification is at two points. We have outside, we have outside verification and we have in-home verification. The residents can do the in-home, they obviously can't do the outside, so we have to do the outside regardless. Why?
Most of the time. Boots-on-the-ground guy here. This is kind of just retreading it, but when we find on an in-home verification, we find lead, right? Well, there's a cost savings instantly, because now it doesn't matter if they need a full replacement out of the curb stop or just what we call partial, that home, now we don't need to suck up their front yard and take a look at that curb stop. So all these years we've been doing this, we were at three hundred and thirty-eight dollars, as you know. So getting into every home, that is really good. That's the goal. However, when we get in so many, when I get in so many homes in Ferndale, people have made the repair. They oftentimes, and I see this all day, every day, copper in the home, and that's a great start. But then we still need to verify outside the home. But when we find lead through a self-reporting tool, or myself, or the EPA, when we find lead or galvanized in the home, well, that's a huge cost savings. So what you were saying about in-home verifications, that's a great place to start. Here comes the but, here we go. But. People don't, in this day and age, and every day and age, they don't want to open their door. You can wear as much high-vis yellow as you want, look G-rated, you know, you're standing with balloons and cotton candy. They will not open their door, no matter what you do. And thereby, those homes that we anticipate that there is lead, in fact, quite frankly, I know there's lead there. I still need to verify outside the home, so we don't get that cost savings, whether it was three thirty-eight or six ten. So there's a little background. So in-home, wonderful, truthfully, that's the way to go. We just can't get in every home, which we need to do, so.
Well, and, and that gets to my next item, which is I, I know that we have done an effort to encourage people to do self-reporting. Personally, I don't think that we've done a hard effort of doing that. And I, I don't know, maybe we can't. The fine gentleman next to me is going to tell me whether or not we can. Is there a reason why we can't give a time period and say, within the next year, you need to self-verify? If you don't self-verify, you're going to have to pay a five hundred dollar fee to have someone come in your home to verify. That's going to get a lot of people to verify real quick. And we did, we basically did it with the meters, you know. And, and now, almost all of the meters have been replaced. There's a couple of people that still, you know, want to.
Yeah, I'd say it, it is a little bit more than a couple, if you were to use that as. If you were to use that as an example, I believe we're at right around 200, 250 that just pay the fee and.
It's like 1%.
Yeah.
1%?
Of 10,000. Correct. And I, I just wanted to step back for a minute, answer one question. So we talked about getting more information to know what we have. And we have a pretty good idea of what we have, because we've touched about 5,000 homes and we found the percentage of lead that we found when we did touch those homes was 57%. We got 10,000. We're looking at having 3750 left to replace, because we've already replaced about 2,000. And I'll just say that it would be great to have more information, but we don't. And I think we're pretty accurate within about 5% on the number of what we have left.
Because the reality is, we need to know whether or not you have lead or not. You know, I, I, yeah, the ones that we, that have lead, we absolutely need to know. But we also need to know that you don't have lead. So to me, you know, putting a price tag on it, saying, look, you need to do this. Within the next six months, within the next year, you need to do this. Otherwise, we're going to be spending a million plus verifying your home. Do you want to pay that in higher water rates? It's, it's the ultimatum. You either pay it here, you pay it there.
And I, I will just add too, that as a Ferndale resident, I have a copper in my basement. I know because of the age of my home, I can see cement work was done around it. There is a lead service line underneath. There's a lead pack. Comes out copper. And the state says that you have to verify that. You can't just say, we see copper in the basement, it's copper, and move on. Like either way, even if I self-report, and I have, we still have to do a factor verification.
I just, I think, I think we're, there, there's sort of like two considerations here. And they're not necessarily different ones, but I think they're two different topics that we're talking about. We have what you guys are talking about, which is like a really like rigorous public works plan, which is great. We want that too. But we are also talking about our responsibility as a council and your responsibility as well as city employees to figure out how we more quickly get information to residents about the state of their home and their health. So while I understand that the verifications may not be needed necessarily for the public works plan, I do hear from residents, and I certainly talk to them at their doors, and they go, well, I don't know yet. No one's come to tell me. And I've got kids. So I get that the verification thing definitely ties into the, the, the infrastructure planning that we need to do. But there's also, as my colleague Mayor Protem said, there's the public health component, and then there's just the resident concern component. We're also addressing that. When we verify, we're helping residents understand that we are, we are honest with them. And we've, this body has been nothing but honest with residents, that we do not have the money to replace all the lead lines. They're very aware of that, barring a, a major financial change for us. But what we can't tell them is, do you have lead? If I can tell someone, you do have a lead line, do not panic. Here are the things you can do to mitigate that. You are absolutely on the list for replacement. We see you. We know that this is an issue and we are committed to fixing it. We just cannot commit to a timeline right now. And I know no one wants to hear that. Of course not. Everybody wants to know it's going to be addressed right now. But knowing is half the battle, is knowing I have a lead line. I would rather a resident know that, even if we can't replace it for another eight years, but they can take mitigation efforts right now. I mean, that's really important. So the verification part to me is, it's important. It, it, it dictates the decision for the infrastructure plan, but it also dictates the outcomes for the resident in the home today, right now. They know what the status of their home is, and they know what steps they should take to make them and their families safe. Those are, they're, they're different outcomes, but they come from the same source of data, which is verification data. But as a body, I think we're looking to make sure that we can give that kind of information to residents. And telling them that, oh, well, 50% of our, I mean, that's, that does not help a resident. There's a 57% chance you might have a lead. I mean, that doesn't help a resident who is concerned.
Through the chair. And on top of that, I'd like to see this money go to fixing the problem rather than verifying the problem. And again, I know that we have to still do the, the outside verification, but if we can save some of this money to not have to verify, I, I think that's an opportunity. And I'll be, you know, I'll be blunt with you. While you were giving the presentation, I was documenting my, my verification, because I had taken the photos like months ago and completely forgot about it. And I auto-pay through, through the, the bank account. So I don't even see my water bill. It comes in and I file it away, because the money's coming out. So I don't see those notices, and I know I'm not unique. I, I think there just needs to be a really aggressive plan that says, look, you're going to, you're going to pay for it either through higher water bills or through a fee if you don't do this.
Well, I, I know legal's going to work on the answer to can we charge a fee? But it would certainly be feasible for us to put together marketing materials that explain how reaching X percentage goal versus X percentage goal of self-reported impacts our operating costs from year to year and thus tie that to a percentage increase associated with rates.
And it costs us $600 to verify each, oh, and 610 or something like that?
We could easily say if we were able to achieve 20% self-verification versus 30 versus 40, what that means for our operating budget over time and hopefully use that as an incentive to residents to show that we can keep rates lower, the more of them that actually self-report.
Yeah, I, I don't not want to give you the support and the personnel that you need to do the job. I, I just, I'd, I'd like to save as much as we can before we start hiring more people.
Through the chair, that's, that's exactly where I'm at. I mean, we made, we made a commitment after the Headley override passed that we were going to be very mindful of adding head count just due to the fact that once it's added, it's there. It's there indefinitely. So this isn't going to be a short-term engagement. These are going to be people that we expect to keep on board for the long haul. And what we're looking at here theoretically should be a short-term massive push to get these verifications done as quickly as possible. And I feel like if we just flesh that out a little bit better, or if, if you want to go back to the table and somehow do a, like flesh out the position of what these folks are going to do during their, their time that they're not doing verifications? And if that offsets any contractor cost, like if it offsets Davy Tree Services, if they're doing tree work or something like that, so that we can see a cost benefit analysis, that could be helpful. But as it stands right now, I'm just, I'm uncomfortable with the, the concept of adding two full-time people for what feels like a, a short run of verifications.
And, and I also see, sorry, through the chair. I also see the, the benefit of getting all of that information as soon as possible. So if, if we, if we make an aggressive plan over the next six or eight months to get all that information, then in hiring the, a person, two people, they know where to focus, you know? I, I'm going to guesstimate that the far northeast corner, which is a lot newer community, is probably not going to have, they're going to self-report and say they have galvanize steel or.
Copper.
Copper. You know, whereas, you know, Troy and Saratoga and Albany, they're going to have, they're going to have lead. And at least you, you know, these people are going to know where they need to do their external verifications first to get all that done.
So where I am on this is I, I do not have as many concerns about adding heads, because it's not general funded. It is water funded. And I do believe we can probably make it fit such that it, you know, fits within the fund at least for a year or two without adversely affecting rates. I think I can work that out through the finance committee, a plan. I think my concern, the really hesitation for me is I need more than three and a half months of verification work. I mean, that's, that's not enough. If we're going to be doing this and we're telling residents that this is why we're doing this, three and a half months is, is just not enough. I want more verification data, because I want that data so that we can tell residents what's going on and the status of their home and what methods they might need to take to keep their family safe. That's my biggest concern right now. I know, because we don't have the money to do a ton of replacements. But what we can do is let people know so that they can take those necessary actions. I don't like the idea of potentially thousands of homes having unknown lead, because they may not be taking the necessary steps. They may not know they need to. I would rather address that and then continue to worry about, which I do all the time, finding the money for the full thing. So my concern is less about adding the heads. I think this is justifiable. And I think many of the residents would accept the rationale behind it. I just think they would accept it better if there was a bigger weight toward the amount of time spent doing verifications. Because I think for me, this feels a little, and I, it feels a little like this is back-dooring in additional staff for DPW by putting a veneer of water lead line replacement on it. I, I need it to be a little bit more toward the purpose that I'm being sold for this. So, you know, I am content to give you positions and capacity, but I want that capacity to be toward the function that I'm most concerned about, which is lead line verification. Anything else they do to support DPW would be bonus, but it would not be a majority of their annual time.
Yeah, that's a fair point. When we look at capital, we look at the water, water and sewer budget in general. I can look at whether we can condense the timeline, probably cut it from 12 to 6, see if that's feasible. But I couldn't speak to that until I do so.
Yeah, I, I think from the direction we're hearing here, Jameson and I can go back to the drawing board and talk about maybe a five to six-year timeline on verification alongside a more aggressive marketing campaign related to self-verification to see how that impacts our, our financial future over that period of time.
I also want to just ask, verifications are going on, have been ongoing already. May I ask, what, what, how many staff members have been conducting those verifications to ask for additional staff? I just want to know what's the, what's the strain or what's the?
Yeah. Prior to this, we did not use staff to do verifications internally. We did some in 2020 at the very early stages of our first lead service line replacement program.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that this be tabled until the, so I move.
We already made a motion.
Oh, crap.
You can amend the motion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because the motion to table takes precedence. So I move to table this item until the November 10th regular city council meeting to give the city manager and the DPW director and the lead service line project manager more time to revise their proposal.
Support.
Johnson.
Yes.
McColsky.
Yes.
Polica.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes. Yes. Okay. All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
The amended motion has passed. Thank you for the presentation, James.
Thank you.
All right. All right. All right. With that being said, I'm going to open it up for a call to council and for the city manager to, for department head updates.
Clerk's office?
Hello. Just an update for the upcoming election here. So far, we've had 5,642 ballots requested for absentee ballots. About 30% of those are 1705 have been returned to our office. So we do have about 70% of absentee ballots that are still out in the community. Just want to make sure that those are returned to our office by 8:00 PM on election night. Early voting is going on right now, not this moment, but right now, as far as the days go, from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM every day through November 2nd, with the exception of Thursday, October 29th, which will go from noon to 8:00. And that's at the Hazel Park Community Center. You could even cast your absentee ballot there if you'd like. Otherwise, you can vote in person, just like it would be on a polling day. As far as election day goes, obviously, is November 4th. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and you would just go to your regular polling location. If you do need to register to vote still, please come into City Clerk's Office with proof of residency, and we can get you registered to vote in person and then also give you an absentee ballot right then and there if you're interested in doing that as well. If you are looking for an absentee ballot still, you have until 5:00 PM to request it online until this Friday, October 31st. And then on Monday at 4:00 PM, you could request a ballot in person at our office. So if you come in with your ID to our office, we can get you an absentee ballot up through 4:00 PM on Monday, November 3rd. And if you have any questions, just feel free to give us a call. My number is 248-336-4366. Thank you.
Through the chair. If I missed this, I, I apologize. But was it suggested that this now being so close to the election day, that it should be dropped off rather than thrown into the mail?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Polica. Yeah, if you do have an absentee ballot, please drop it off at one of our drop boxes. There's one outside City Hall, one inside City Hall, and one in the DOT parking garage. That will ensure that we do have it in our possession by 8:00 PM on election night. In Michigan, we do not use postmark dates. We actually use a date that it's physically in, in the hands of the City Clerk's Office. Thank you.
And in the past, we used to be able to check to see if the city hall or you have received our, because it's been validated, it's been checked in. Is that still, are we still able to do that on the Michigan, State of Michigan website?
Yep, you can still go to mi.gov/vote and look up your voter registration there. And when you look up your voter registration, it'll actually tell you if your ballot has been accepted for this upcoming election. We receipt them in fairly quickly. So every business day, we're caught up by 5:00 PM for every ballot that we have in our possession. And if, you know, if you, you could also feel free to give us a call or email us, and we could confirm that way as well.
I think it's important for people who, especially people who vote really early, like, you know, you get the ballots in the end of September and people are like, I don't remember if I voted or not. Well, you can check on the website to see if you, your ballot has been received.
Public safety?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. With Halloween approaching on Friday, quick weather, it should be in the 40s and overcast. Hopefully, the rain holds off. Some safety tips. If you are wearing a costume, try to refrain from wearing masks, because it's going to restrict your visibility. If you are out trick-or-treating, hopefully, you choose a costume that's flame resistant. Try to augment your costume with reflective materials to make you more visible when trick-or-treating. Maybe attach it to the bag. If you're a parent, please stay close to your little ones. If you are crossing the street, please look both ways. Be careful. Just because you see the car doesn't mean they see you. We will have extra personnel out, as well as the fire department is typically out and about as well. Trying to keep an eye on everybody. Drive slow, be careful, and dress warm. That's all I have.
Sustainability?
Hello, Mayor and Council. I just want to announce that Ferndale is doing the pumpkin plop again this year. So for the past, this will be our third year collecting and composting pumpkins in the, during the, you know, holiday spooky season. So we will have two locations again this year for the plop, at the Kulik Center and in the southeast corner of the Martin Road Park parking lot by the residential compost bins. I just ask that folks use the open-top dumpsters that will be there instead of the food scrap containers. We don't want them to overflow and the squirrels to start hanging out. So we just ask that folks do not include anything plastic, any painted pumpkins. And if you have the candles or such inside them, to please remove them before including them in the pumpkin plop. And then for future, you know, these pumpkins can also be put in your yard waste. We just ask that they're not put in the leaf collection at the curb, so that they impact the DPW machinery. We've had a very successful, we fill the open-top dumpsters. So they will be at these two locations from Wednesday, the 29th, through Friday, November 7th. Great. Thank you all.
That's all.
Okay. All right. I think I started here last time. I'm going to start here. Councilmember Polica?
I have nothing this evening.
Nothing from me?
The only item I have tonight is I've been speaking to a number of residents who are very concerned about food insecurity, SNAP benefits. And we're very fortunate in this area to have strong regional partners like Forgotten Harvest.
like Forgotten Harvest, Gleaners, Community Food Bank. Just a reminder that those resources are available. There's also a resource, and that is 211. The website's mi211.org that you can actually search to find nearby food pantries, SNAP assistance, other emergency resources. It is wildly valuable. So if you are concerned, if you have neighbors that might be concerned, please share the resources and let's look out for each other.
I'm glad you mentioned something about 211, Mayor Protem, because I know that they're reaching out. It looks like they have a resource guide. And I was going to check with the city or, Colin, you may not know about this yet or not, but apparently, we are in their resource guide for some reason, and they wanted to know if we wanted to remain on their resource, in their resource guide. So I'm not sure how we are affiliated. So I wanted to check with you regarding that because they're reaching out to me about it. Anyone know? If anyone, we'll talk about it later, but, okay. I don't really have anything tonight other than, I will say that I do know that the marching band is going into a competition on Saturday at Ford Field. So rooting for them to bring home another champion. They have some stiff competition, and go Eagles. That's it. This meeting is, this meeting is, I cannot think tonight. This meeting is adjourned at 8:32 PM.
It's only Monday.
I know, but Monday is a killer for me. Monday is a killer for me.